Everyone?
Yes, sir.
Today is August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Meeting of the Governor's Zoning Order Appeals. Before we begin tonight's public hearing, I'd like to familiarize you with some of the ground rules by which we operate under. In regard, four members out of five of the zoning order appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appear in public notice. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the board. An applicant may appear on his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. Abutters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. Members of the board, I'll skip that one. I'll say, members of the board who are hearing the case may direct questions anytime during the hearing. The board must render its decision regarding variances within one hundred days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within sixty-five days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members out of five of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of this board is provided for in chapter forty-eight of the zoning act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that the twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in their office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as their name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing, to my far right is Laurie Whitta, next to Laurie is Richard Hanks, myself, Ray LaFon's chair, to my left Mel Cornet, and my far, oh, and after Mel, Dave Anteia, and my far left Robert Rice. The meeting will be videotaped and taped. Does anyone object to the taping or videotaping? There's no objection. I would ask, please silence your cell phone if you haven't already. Thank you. Okay. The first case before the board this evening. I'm going to bypass the order that's in. We have two withdrawals. I'd like to get those done and out of the way quickly. Is Attorney Trevor Brown and Camden Brown present?
They're not present at this time.
Did they send a letter?
No, they said they will be shown how to do it.
All right. I'll go to the next one. It's case two oh two five dash oh seven. It's a continuance variance. Is Sean Keane here? Sean Keane? That's the other withdrawal. So he's not here, but I do have a letter. Just let me get to the file. I do have it here. "The letter is addressed to dear zoning board members. We are withdrawing our variance application, is no longer necessary, and leaving the portion of the driveway beyond the standard twenty-four-foot length as gravel. The company doing the paving will be pulling the permit for this paving once over the coming months. Sincerely, Sean Keane, fourteen Temple Street, homeowner." Do I hear a motion to accept the request for withdrawal for Mr. Keane?
I will make a motion to accept the withdrawal from Mr. Keane without prejudice.
Thank you.
Second?
Okay. Any discussion? None? Then all in favor of allowing Mr. Keane to withdraw without prejudice? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Astridamously. And we'll just table the prior one till towards the end of the meeting. So the next case before us is case two oh two-two dash oh one, dash oh one. So can you continue on special permit? Jonathan Bombachi, M H G Three Fund LLC, one sixty-three Pine Street, one sixty-five Pine Street, parcel ID R twenty-two dash six dash eight, special permit violation. Mr. Bombachi, agent or representative?
Representative, Attorney Christine Tree for Mr. Bombachi, Simplified Management in the M H G. Mr. Bombachi is also to my left and is present. Can I clarify, we have the violation and the modification both before the board at the same time? Yes, okay. Thank you. Just a moment while I make the connection. All right.
Mr. Chair, just so that Attorney Tree knows, I did watch both of the previous meetings. If you're comfortable with it, I filled out the Mullen rule paperwork for Mariella.
I was going to ask whether anybody needed to verify that they've watched the minutes from a meeting that they had missed. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Your pleasure.
Is there any other number that has missed a meeting on this case that needs to verify that they've watched the minutes?
Attorney Tree, I just want a clarification here.
Sure.
The case that I called two oh two two oh one oh one, that's a special permit, and in the agenda I have, we have another case, two oh two five dash oh seven dash oh three. Are you looking to do both of them together?
Yes, please, Mr. Chair.
All right. So our question may, you know, go all over, so we'll try our best to keep them assigned to the right case. You may begin.
Thank you. So I just want to clarify as far as the special permit violation goes. I think we've, through the hearings, reached the point where we've determined although none of the conditions have been violated, the plan that was submitted and approved was not complied with, that the petitioner tried to comply with the plan, that the petitioner was unable to comply with reconstruction to the original approved plan, and that we moved forward to requesting a modification of the special permit that has been issued. And the modification has been the subject of much discussion after some appreciated comments on several different alternatives that were presented for the board to make up the issue of a lack of one parking space, or, I'm sorry, a lack of two parking spaces from the plan as originally allowed, which resulted in the submission of a new petition, a new application for modification of the special permit. The proposal is to make some modifications to the parking plan, provide all parking on-site, so that the net result is going to be one less parking space than originally approved, ten instead of eleven, and the petitioner proposes to give up one of the dwelling units so that they will reduce from eight to seven. That is the summary of where we were. I have in my slideshow, just to show you for reference, we can look back at the original approved plan, we can look back at the plan presented at the last meeting, but I would like to move ahead to the current plan. If there is any desire to go back, please let me know and we can go back, focus in on any areas of those prior plans. So from the last meeting, we did finally get the draft survey back from the surveyor, and the parking plan was revised, and the revision was received this afternoon in accordance with making any adjustments that were needed due to the survey. So what you see before you here is the parking plan from McKenzie that has been adjusted after review of the draft survey that was completed. What I did for the board, in addition to, I have the slides and we can have some focused in areas, I printed out the overview and then two close-ups on the plan so that you can look along at it. And so this one for Mariella's records, and I have emailed just now the plan PDF to Mariella as well, so she has that within the records. So that's the large, the full plan. This is a little more focused in on it. And then this is the close-up on the notes to the side.
Strange weather.
Yes.
Thank you.
Very. So this is the overview, and what I'll do if you, is if any board member wants to see something that I haven't shown on a focused area, please let me know and we'll go back and center it on. So here is the little closer up that shows all of the parking. And so I'm going to focus on what I think are the non-questioned areas first. Down at the southern sideline, the existing wall will be demoed and pushed out just a little bit. The setback will be one foot four inches from the property boundary, which is in accordance with the fact that the driveway that is already there goes all the way out to the boundary line. So it is set in a little bit. It does not go out as far as the existing driveway goes.
Sorry, did you say that was one foot four inches?
One foot four inches is the mark, and that is right there, if you can see it on the plan.
Well, that's the wall.
At the back, right, the wall at the back corner. If we go up to the front of the property, the driveway, as you can see, is marked all the way to the boundary line, and that's how it's installed.
So the parking, the paving adjacent to that wall would be how far off the lot line?
The pavement as opposed to the wall?
Yeah, the pavement as opposed to the lot line. Do you mean the five foot? I know you're saying that the pavement for the driveway already exists at zero lot line, but what is the pavement off the lot line to the parking space?
The pavement goes all the way to the lot line. The pavement of the existing driveway, starting at the entrance from the street, goes all the way to the lot line on the southern boundary, the existing pavement. Am I answering your question?
So the pavement goes over the retaining wall, the new retaining wall?
So the pavement goes all the way to the lot line here. There is, I'm going to go to the next slide, which is a little bit closer. It varies inward, and then where it says demo wall, demo wall, that is the edge of the current retaining wall on that southern boundary. So the, just this piece that follows the side boundary line will be removed and pushed out slightly to the marked wall that shows to be one foot four inches from the side boundary line. The heavy mark there is the side boundary line, the lot line.
Thank you.
Okay, now when you, when this is marked, you have one through six back here, seven is up above on the buddy park, I think, next to the street, and then eight is down below. So you're not counting that second buddy parking as a?
So, um...
So you see seven up there, but there's a?
I do. No, I do see what you're saying there. No, I see what you're saying. Mr. Chair, would you mind, and I know this is a little unorthodox, would you mind if we step back for five minutes? I just want to discuss this with my client.
You may.
Thank you. Closing.
This is, that's been, oh, there's, this isn't, we have, we have somebody, I don't see, right here, to the back of it, we see this is where, so this is, there's a, there's a, but they didn't put out.
Yeah. Eight B, you require nine.
I assume, yeah, but, but I can see that our engineer doesn't, I believe, seven feet.
Seven foot one.
I didn't, I didn't notice, but I'm not sure who did it. Take one.
But you didn't, the party, no, we're still missing one. There's number ten.
I'm going to ask her if she is, I'm going to ask her if she is, if she's too confident. If she hasn't, I thought process, it's not really, if you further, if you do the preparing or responses, and if there's some changes, then we make them a part of this.
It's like baby steps, everything.
I'm going to ask again, on this buddy parking, here's my issue, is that this is where?
I didn't understand her.
Right. Why are we keeping that up?
On the survey.
Yeah.
Eight, I lost it.
It doesn't matter, it's been approved previously by the board, so we can't revisit something that's already been approved.
Maybe revisit it off on stuff, maybe not a lot.
We shouldn't, I know. It's going to get us in trouble, because the real issue is the parking down here, not this. You see, the incident hasn't liked you, I don't like you either. Oh, I didn't know that. I wasn't here. So, but regardless, asking approved, there's nothing to think about it. At least, I don't know if anybody told anything about it. You know, like the attorneys quit that, but the board knows.
Has the plan changed because of the actual survey?
They're basically the same thing I saw in my first, saw the year ago.
Was that one?
Yeah. Because it's always been known, because it's a person's house. So it's, the issue is, is that we keep getting wrapped ourselves around it, and it's not, it's not even part of the discussion, or shouldn't be.
I don't see number ten. What am I missing?
No, they're counting this, that's why I asked the question. They're showing eight, and this would be seven, this would be eight, that's nine, and this would be the second buddy parking this time.
Nine, ten.
Is this, is this one?
It's eight right here, so one, two, three, four, five, six, oh, seven, eight, nine.
I'm questioning whether it is, is that being considered a spark in the?
Well, that's why I asked the question, and see where the hell is the other one?
Right.
Because if they're doing ten, I can get to nine, I can't get to ten.
Right, right, same.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Attorney Tree, you have some resolve, or?
I thank you for the moment with my client, as I said, this can come in today, this afternoon. And I apologize for not noticing that there, on the final plan, that there was a parking space that is now eliminated, that was there before. That is very unfortunate for, I think, all of us. So I've had a brief discussion with my client. We can't make the parking any better on this lot. We can't make it any better than it is. I don't know how to add another parking space. We've been back and forth with the surveyor and the engineer. We have obtained an easement from the abutter to the extent that the buddy parking spaces go over, but that is all the space that there is on the lot. If we eliminate, and I'm just anticipating the board might ask this, if we eliminate another dwelling unit and go down to six, this property will not be able to meet its debt service, and it will eventually go into foreclosure. We can't agree, and I apologize for that, but we can't agree to reduce down to six units either. I will, I will say this, that again, the parking has been, in effect, has been utilized. We are expanding it by one more space in the back. The buddy parking is improved, and there is meeting the condition that was in the original special permit. There is still at least one parking space per dwelling unit, even considering that two of the spaces are allocated to the first floor unit. There are still seven spaces in the back for the other six apartments, and I can't, I don't have the ability to offer anything more than that to the board today. We have tried several methods, including locating parking at three oh seven Pine Street, which is another property that is owned by the property owner. You know, we, I don't really want to go back and look at that again, that was never acceptable to the board, it was twelve hundred feet away. We don't have another alternative to offer. There is on-street parking available, and although this is certainly, you know, not my, this was not my intention to bring up during this process because the zoning ordinance has been slightly amended since we began this process, there is a little bit more flexibility in the board to approve modifications to the required parking. It does not require that the parking be located off-street anymore, just that adequate parking be available. And I would further suggest to the board that because, again, this property has been operating as is for a while, the tenants have been utilizing on-street parking. It's not my favorite. We don't want to add to congestion in the neighborhood, but we have provided at least one space per unit, and that is how it has been functioning. We have talked about delaying and seeing if there's anything else we can do, but we've, we've been six ways to Sunday on this property, trying to maximize the parking, and it's just, it's what it is. I do apologize that after the survey was done and the actual measurements came out and were applied to this plan, it was not as it was expected. That's what it is. So I'll say that, I will go on to address the other issues just briefly that were raised by the board, and then if the board wants to ask some questions about the parking or about the parking plan, I'm happy to go back. This was the surveyor's measurements of which the adjustments to the parking plan were made, and that had been forwarded to the board. We can go and look at that. This was the rear of the building, there was a question about lighting in the rear of the building. We had displayed this at the last meeting just to understand that it was not one emergency exit, there were separate tenant exits going all the way up the building. And if you recall, the abutter was here and stated as to whether the lighting was sufficient, that it was lit up like a Christmas tree, and it was very adequate lighting for the tenants. What you see here is a photograph, and that's what the tenant, what the building looks like at night with the existing lighting. Those are the lights controlled by the tenant going up the floors of the building, they're on the exterior next to their door, controlled by a switch. And what I would say about it is that there is very adequate lighting for that stairwell from those lights. We did provide information on the additional exterior lighting that would be installed at a height of fifteen feet on the left and right rear sides of the building, and then keeping that line level, although the ground rises a little bit, on the driveway on the side. So we did provide a little more information on the proposed lighting fixture, other than being fifteen feet up. The motion activation is within a hundred and eighty degrees. The detection range can be set to between ten and a hundred feet, so we can keep it very close to the building, or at least not too far out so that it's activated unnecessarily. There is a ball joint on the back of the, on the back of the fixture, and it says that in the documentation for the fixture, that it can be tilted this way eighty degrees and left to right forty-five degrees. So that would allow us to focus it on the rear parking area. The documentation for the fixture says that the light will project a minimum of eighty-six feet outward and ninety-six feet wide, so that is far enough certainly to reach the parking lot and cover it. We do expect that that will provide some additional lighting to the first flight of stairs on the bottom. And again, there are no buildings to the side at the level of the parking lot or to the rear. And again, there are no buildings to the side at the level of the parking lot or to the rear. So there are, it can be directed. There's also no abutters right there that are going to get the light shining into their eyes. And I did give some information on the, on the, on the lighting fixture in a, another reference. Another request was to check in with the building commissioner. And I did check in with him on, today I spoke to Mr. Cook. I did check in with him on the issue of the easement deed being sufficient to allow the buddy parking and any specifications for the guardrail. His response on the buddy parking was that's outside of his pay grade because it's a legal, legal answer as to whether the easement is sufficient. And that the guardrail should be designed for the building permit by the engineer, just like a retaining wall would be. And that during the process of issuing any building permit, he would be reviewing the sufficiency of the guardrail to serve its purpose. So that any, any needed standards could be specified by the engineer and reviewed by the building department through that separate process. The, a copy of the signed easement was forward to you. That easement would need to be recorded, of course, at the registry of deeds. We did have a meeting last week with the abutter who appeared, Mr. Holmes, and very nicely worked out a number of issues. So he did not have a problem with the paving and the parking going right up to his foundation if it did need to do so. There's a little divot next to his building that he wanted to make sure was going to be filled in as part of the smoothing process. He wanted to understand what the, what the fill is that was going to be brought in, which it's, it's not a leveling. It's a smoothing of the existing grade. And there are some lumps and bumps in the road. There is only a differential of about an inch between the existing driveway pavement and the cement step that is the entryway into the tenant's area. So there's not much room to raise the grade. It wouldn't be raised very much at all. We've looked at the rocks. We don't think that the rocks that jet out from his foundation would need to be addressed really at all. They could just be paved over. They're not high. And another issue that he actually brought up while we were there is there was a, there's a tree on the line towards the front. He's interested in having it removed. That's something that, you know, we could agree on later. But he was interested in having that tree removed, which is a good thing as far as I'm concerned. At any rate, he did sign the easement. The easement does allow pass and repass in parking. Passing and repassing by foot or motor vehicle for the length of two spaces and going up to his foundation, his existing foundation. The easement does run with the land so that the owners of each parcel must continue to abide to the terms of the easement. The petitioner agreed to redirect the grade slightly so that the water runoff would stay on the petitioner's property and not enter onto the abutter's property or very specifically into his foundation and provide a slight curbing at the edge of the pavement to help the water redirect as well. The proposal is that, and I'm holding the original easement deed with me, it would need to be recorded with the special permit decision, of course, to be effective. And so I'm happy, I'm happy to answer any questions on that. But I just, I'm thankful to Mr. Holmes. He was, you know, we very reasonably worked out an agreement and he doesn't have any objection as he expressed to me.
Thank you.
We've already reviewed the relief required. We'll need to specify the new plan from McKenzie as the plan associated with the decision. And I believe that has a date of today on it. There is the requested relief from the parking setback of five feet. And I just want to be specific that the buddy parking is existing, it's pre-existing, non-conforming. We're not modifying it. We're just repaving it. And I'll, I'll talk about Mr. Aliva's email in just a moment. But the relief is not for that. It's for the extension of the retaining walls north and south. And that is going to be, of course, because the existing pavement and parking spaces and driveways are already out to the boundary lines. It's not going to exceed an existing non-conformity. So we think it's a reasonable relief from the parking requirements. The maneuvering aisle, I think it comes out at eighteen seven now. Instead of eighteen six, so there's a little more room. We had asked for eighteen and a half feet rather than the twenty-four feet required. Now, I am unfortunately going to have to ask for a decrease in parking spaces from eleven to nine now.
Excuse me, are you going to provide this document?
Yes, yes. And if the board doesn't have any objection, it says eleven to ten. I'm going to correct it to eleven to nine because that's what it is. And reduce the units from eight to seven. And I'm, I'm just going to say that we still think that is reasonable. It is also the best that we can do in the situation that we have before us. Mr. Aliva's email, and I do want to thank both, you know, Mr. Cook and Mr. Aliva for being so responsive. I, I don't know that he had any involvement with the project or not at the beginning. I don't know the answer to that question. So for instance, I don't know if he looked at the driveway permit for the curb cut or a curb cut for the left-hand driveway. The buddy parking, as I said, was existing. There's no further curb cut that is needed. There is an existing curb cut in the sidewalk. So Mr. Aliva has expressed a number of concerns about the buddy parking. But he's also stated that there's no driveway permit for repaving that is required without, without further curb cut. He expresses concern about the grade of buddy spaces. And if a guardrail is needed, some being, someone being injured by a car sliding down, it's a steep slope. It's a steep slope. And I understand his concern and if I were designing a building from the beginning, instead of trying to adjust the parking that was unfortunately wrongly constructed now, after the building's been renovated and occupied. Of course, I wouldn't, I wouldn't pick a slope like that. But we are here. You know, we're here trying to resolve this problem now the best that we can. And I'd say that the applicant had tried to be responsive to many board comments as much as they can within the realm of possibility. And a number of adjustments have been offered. The reduction in the unit has been offered. This, these two parking spaces are only for the first floor unit. As I look at them, it's highly likely, likely that somebody's going to park in the first one and not in the second one in the back. You know, except a great need. Because people are currently utilizing the on-street parking. That's what they're doing. And some parking in the back and one, and the first buddy space, but not the second. That's how in action the tenants are using the parking right now. The building is currently occupied in only seven units. All seven units are occupied and not the eighth, right? I'm still. Because the applicant has kept the eighth unit vacant pending resolution here. I did, just to understand, because I know that this applicant is not lightly asking for relief from the board as much as I have on occasion presented a humorous slide or two to the board. This applicant has been trying to resolve this problem, not always, not always diligently, but for approximately two-plus years. We've been here at this since, I believe, September. We went through a timeline before. I'm certain the board can understand without my disclosing what it is that this has been at substantial legal fee costs to the petitioner. There's going to be a number of construction costs associated with what is proposed. There's been money spent on plans that haven't been used. Redrawing the plans, redrawing the plans. Again, not to lay blame at the foot of the board, but just to explain the expense that's been experienced by this applicant. The loss of one unit over the next, you know, ten years or so we've projected out at a present value of approximately a hundred and seventy-five thousand in lost gross income on this property. What is, without making this the board's problem, what I'm saying is that this applicant has undergone a number of expenses and will continue to do so. In far, as far as him kind of paying the penalty of that lot not being constructed properly, he's absolutely going to deal with that because he has, is going to suffer a number of expenses. We feel that this is a acceptable resolution. I understand it's not ideal. I'm not sure. I, I think we're at the point where this is the most acceptable solution that we can provide. And I'm going to ask that the board take its vote on the matter today. And I thank you for your time. Again, I'll be happy to go back and answer any ques- questions or focus on any portion of the plans.
Okay, I'll open up to my board if there are any questions they have. I do have a couple. I will keep them till the end.
When they surveyed the buddy parking area with the neighbor, what, how far off were, were they actu-? I mean, where does the abutter's property line actually lie? Because we never could figure that out.
The abutter's property line appears to be about one foot off the building.
Off of his building?
Mm-hmm. And our buddy parking, the existing pavement appears to extend about one foot into his property.
Okay.
So.
Thus the easement.
Yep.
Pardon?
Thus the easement that the neighbor signed.
Right, I saw that, but I didn't know the actual measure. I probably missed it though.
No, I don't think you did.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Dave?
No, I'm fine.
Mr. Weiss?
No, no questions.
Mr. Cornet?
No.
Laurie?
I do not.
Mr. Hanks? No questions?
No.
I do. I just want to go back almost to day one, but as we look what's transpired over the one to two years, we saw that there was made on the parking to the rear, we had some projected costs. If you take from that point forward, what Mr. Lombardi has spent in terms of legal fees, plans not being used, et cetera, et cetera. The difference in cost might not be as great as, as an impact that it is, it would have been. And if that was met, we wouldn't be here today. This would have just flown through. So I think, you know, Ms. Lombardi and yourself, you've made great efforts to address the issues that have popped up and many have popped up. But they seem to have continually popped up. And I think you addressed some things that we still, we mentioned about a water flow, I think, last month. I haven't seen anything on that, how the water. We talked about paving up to Mr. Arrow Holmes' property. We talked about, so I'll say sort of curving the pavement so the water wouldn't go on his property. But we haven't seen any drawings or plans on that. We, we haven't seen actually anything of how the water's going to divert them and not go into the parking in the back. I know that was talked about. We proposed a couple of plans on, well, we made suggestions regarding not the Jersey barrier, but maybe a fence-type plan. It could have been metal guardrail, it could have been wood, et cetera. We see where the proposed location is. But I know that we can only recommend or suggest, the building commissioner cannot actually say this is the one that you're going to put up. That's really to the engineer to do that and not say, this is the presentation. Also, that has vacillated back and forth to what it's actually going to be. So I, we're not going to be able to meet the five-foot, you know, def- spread on the drive-in and everything, you know, we can't. Just space is not there. We haven't seen a water flow plan, which I mentioned. Also, we don't know what the, they're going to have to grade that driveway. We haven't seen the composition of the grading or what it is and how it's going to be long-lived if it's going to be there. Loss of revenue, I understand that coming from a finance background. But when you're looking either at a variance, a special permit, that is not a condition for the granting of that permit. You know, revenue, income, financial, what's the impact going to be on the property? And the abutters, and let's see, we've had so many changes here. And I feel they haven't even all been addressed at this point. There's still a few outstanding, but, you know, these have made. Those are my little comments. You know, I'm just going all back to two years of where we've come from and where we are, and this has not resolved very quickly. So those are my comments. If anybody else has any comments.
Well, I'll add to that is I think from day one, when I go on, I, I stress that a financial burden, whether regardless of the reason for it, is not grounds for a variance. So I think that was stated from the very beginning.
I, I just want to clarify, we're not asking for a variance. We're asking for a special permit. So, so just that the criteria are different.
Just maneuverable space from twenty-four to eighteen, that's just a special permit. That's not a variance. And the same with the five-foot setback to a lot line for paving, that's just, that's just a special permit.
Correct. And I had put the section up. That's six seventy-five, seven four, seven forty.
So I think as much information has been presented to the board, that it's possible. Because I think we could continue to go for another year, you know, as things happen. And we don't want to prolong it that far for Mr. Lombardi as he has to decide what he's going to do going forward. You know, depending on the decision of the board. And board members, we have, I think massaged this quite a bit. And I think great effort has been made on Mr. Lombardi's part and your part to try to address the issues. But like I said, they seem to keep popping up and I don't know if there's an end game here. But what I'd like to do is, and it's sort of been requested, is move on this and call for a decision on both of the special permit requests that we're talking about here.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to move forward on the two? And I'll just highlight them again. It's case twenty-two oh two-two oh one oh one, Jonathan Lombardi, MIG, MHG three fund LLC one sixty-three, one sixty-five, Pine Street. Special permit violation. That has been addressed. The next one is Jonathan Lombardi MH three fund LLC one sixty-three, one sixty-five, Pine Street. Parcel ID R twenty-two, twenty-two dash six dash eight. Modification of previous special permit conditions by reducing the one unit dwelling to seven and one parking space per unit. Do I hear a, you would make the motion, okay.
I would make the motion to move forward with what you have just said.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion from anybody at this point, I'm going to call for a vote.
Just to clarify what that motion is.
Do we have to? Do we have to list any of the stipulations, or is what's in the permit okay? I guess I'm trying to figure out, what plan are we voting on?
These are the two applications that have contained a lot of data, and a lot of, most of which we've been talking about for many months.
The one you presented tonight. The one you have presented.
So I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of granting these two special permit requests for Jonathan Lombardi and his related companies, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Okay, at this point, we have one, two, three, yes, and three, no. So it's a split vote, you need four positive to approve it. So we do not have an approval here tonight. Yes?
Mr. Chair, my understanding is that this is a five-member board with alternates. Can I just ask which votes were by an alternate member?
Could you come up a little bit, I'm having a hard time to hear you.
You had six votes, and we've got a five-member committee who's not, who wasn't supposed to vote.
Who is?
No, you've got two alternates behind you, Brian.
So I'm just asking which vote was from the alternate member? Is it a yes or a no?
I've been following it the.
Almost from day one.
I should not, my vote should not count.
You want to withdraw your vote?
Yes.
Okay. And Laurie, you have addressed that you have been watching it. You're signing the documents, that you've watched all the file.
So we're going to re-vote, just to make it clear?
I'll re-vote it, but I'll recall it. Do I hear a motion to vote on this, that will be one, two, three, four, five members, excluding Mr. Rice?
I make a motion to vote with the members that you just outlined.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of granting the variances, I said to Mr. Jonathan Lombardi and his related companies, say aye. A yea?
Yes.
A yea?
Yes.
A yea?
Yes.
All those opposed?
No.
Say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So we have three yays, two nays, which turns down the approval process. So the approval, two special permits have been denied.
We appreciate your coming to the vote.
Thank you, we appreciate all the effort you've put into this. This has not been one of the easiest ones.
So I'm just going to state that, of course, the written decision will need to be made and filed with the city clerk. My client will need to decide what to do on the basis of the decision, and then we'll at some point reach out to the building commissioner, because we now have a building that's occupied without a special permit. That is very unfortunate for the residents of that building. And we'll need to see what happens going forward, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no further comments?
So what is his options now? He voted no on it, so what's his option?
That's a discussion you need to have with his attorney. I mean, if you want to boil it down, you accept it, or you appeal it?
We are going to have to decide whether or not to appeal to a court, is what's going to happen first, or, you know, shut down the building. So that hopefully will not happen, but there are some issues that we can't resolve here, so we'll need to see how it goes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm thinking just practically my agenda. I'm going to ask just officially to get a motion to close the public hearing on this special permit.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, I'm calling for motion to close this case. I've got the first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have opposition, not taken, special permit papers are closed. His attorney, Trevor Brown? Excuse me, Cameron Camden Brown?
Not present.
And they were coming?
They did say they were going to show, but they had mentioned that they were planning to withdraw without prejudice. I request that they write from them. They did not submit the letter, so I don't know if there's been a best thing.
All right, I'll hold that one until the last case. John King, I've came to talk about exchange right, Netley's portfolio twenty-one, Timpany Boulevard, parcel ID R twenty-two dash twenty-one dash thirteen, allocation of six parking spaces for Hanaford to go grow, I'm sorry, Hanaford to Go program. Agent or attorney?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could you just identify the five people Bob's going to be sitting on that case?
Just for clarity, Mr. Rice is going to be sitting, but he will not be voted, because he, you weren't here in the first one, were you?
I wasn't here for this, this is the first time.
This is the first time this has been.
Oh, this is your first one?
Yes.
That's correct. Do you all consider, this is a new presentation?
Yes.
Look, we vote tonight, only one votes.
So the vote will be, no?
Good evening, my name is Jason Howen, I'm a civil designer with VHB. I'm here tonight to discuss the application for Hanaford.
Could I ask just a, before we get started, want a clarification? Isn't there a special permit already on these?
Yes, it will.
So are you looking for a modification of that special permit, or a new special permit?
This would be a new special permit, it's a modification.
Not for trailer sharing, I would say.
Yeah, I think the quick question, Mr. Cornet was asking, you're not adding any additional spaces?
No, no new additional spaces.
How many do you have?
We have one hundred and eighteen spaces on the site.
No, no, the ones that you got the special permit on?
Oh, that was six spaces.
So we're going to be addressing those six spaces, correct?
Yes.
Not bringing any of those hundred and something you just talked about?
Those spaces, no new spaces will be added, two spaces specifically on the west side of the building, which I'll get into as well.
So I'm just asking some questions, because we may be able to facilitate this quickly.
Yeah.
Your six spaces.
Yeah, I can just get right into it if you'd like.
You want to move two to the side of the building?
We want to move, I'll show you on this plan here, we have two of the, two of the parking spaces on the west side of the building, circle. Those two today are Hanaford to Go parking spaces, and with some efficiency deficiencies that Hanaford's to Go program has found, they'd like to move in line six parking spaces in front on the, in the middle circle there, so it'd be six in-line parking spaces. With that, we would, we would shift one ADA space and that respective loading zone down to continue that in-line ADA space, providing access to the front doors still.
So are you moving both of those spaces that's along Timpany away in line, is what you're saying?
Yes, and those will be restripped to be a standard.
Sort of like, just standard parking over there?
Yes.
So really, you know, that's a modification, what other special permit didn't add? So you might want to say your request is a modification of the special permit you received back some time ago?
Yes, in two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, and you've just explained where they're moving to in your drawing?
Yes, and those, those two spaces on the west side of the building on Timpany are being moved to the parking spaces that are drawn in black on the screen. So we show the two on the west side grayscale as existing, and then the two darkened lines are the restripped Hanaford to Go parking spaces.
So just for clarification, did you receive a variance for this prior, or a special permit prior?
This is a variance, right?
It was a variance.
I thought they said it was a variance.
No, it is.
You still can get a modification to a variance.
I just want the terminology to be the same, that the garden varies.
I know.
The cages of areas.
Let me get the file, you know, let's see what we've got there.
Who's going up for that?
It was a variance.
Variance, and I'm reading from the decision of October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Yes.
So it is a variance?
The Garden's owner board of appeals at its September seventh, two thousand and twenty-two meeting voted to grant a variance without conditions to David Fenster.
That's me.
I'll call you David F.
That's good.
Agent to reserve six parking spaces with signage online, Hanaford to Go shoppers at twenty-one Timpany Boulevard. I just want to make sure I know which two exactly, you see the two that are bordering Timpany?
Yes.
Those are moving.
Those two are moving.
Go to the screen before, look through the little dots, the red dots. Those show the two on the side, that's what we came in two thousand and two, is the twenty-two, two on the side and four on the corner. And basically, it's been operating, as Jason mentioned, it's been operating for a few years.
That red carrot up there in the top?
Those, those are building entrances. We want to represent that on the plan to show.
In the photo, we put little red circles?
Yes.
Those are all the, that's kind of the locations of the six spaces. And if you go to the next page, it shows.
Okay, so, one by the top, red carrot, how many spaces is that?
By the top red carrot, that would be six in-line Hanaford to Go spaces.
I'm still trying to figure out, because I'm looking at, you got two, I'm not talking about the circle by Timpany, I'm talking about the oblong circles.
Yeah. Okay, drop the cursor down.
Drop right there, that's six right there.
Yeah, one, two, three.
Six right in that one, four, six.
Four are there now, and we add two, because it would be six.
So you're going to put all six in front of the package store?
Yeah, so when the kids come out to loading, they're all just.
Where are the other two coming from?
The other two are coming from this, these, these two here, which would, which would go back to standard parking.
So I can see, those two are going away.
Yes.
Those four, and where are the other two?
Right in front of the package.
They can end up right in that line with the four?
Yes, right here, and then this loading zone and ADA space will be moved down to.
Okay, is that where the characters are, or stored, or?
No, that's just where the ADA. This is the entrance, was for the package store.
Package store is towards Main Street.
Correct. So all right in front of the package store?
Yeah. And those two carrots in the middle, those are your entry doors?
Yeah.
Okay, I got it. Any questions at first from anybody?
I have none.
So really, this is an application, and it should have been classified as an application for a modification.
Yeah, we, because it was a little confusing, I had, I reached out originally, because if you look at the original application or decision, it's for six spaces, and we have six spaces, so we were, we really reached out to say, should we be coming back at all, because it's just six spaces that are just getting reallocated? But I think at that time, we just talked that it's probably best to just.
I think I'll apologize on behalf of the city, because we've been having issues with the building commissioner. You know, we've had one, we haven't had one, and we still have an interim one. So I think, you know, as we're trying to get through it as best we can. Mariella gives some good insight, but she can't tell you exactly what it is, because she doesn't have the authority to do that.
Also, when I came in two thousand and twenty-two, I presented, and the board said, what are you doing here?
So I think it's a pretty simple case, I mean, I think we've got to resolve, it's a modification of the six spaces, it just didn't have to be moved over there.
Yeah, the record plan that's on file, the two thousand and twenty-two decision is being modified.
Okay, I'll open it up to the members, if you have any questions.
I have no questions.
And Laurie, Dick?
So you are not losing any handicapped spots?
No, those spaces are being lost.
Any questions?
No?
None for me.
No.
Bob, Robert?
No questions.
Okay, then I'll call for a motion for a modification.
I would make a motion to approve the modification of swapping two from the side to the front without losing any spaces.
And not including increasing, it's remaining at six. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in.
You're going to ask if anybody has any questions?
Oh my God, I forgot. I have a couple of things I have to go through. We know there's no city representatives here. Are there any Butters that are property present? Like to speak in favor of, any Butters in the property present, of the property to speak in opposition? Okay, and that takes care of our audience, which is just two people. So now we'll move forward with the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Modification granted.
Thank you.
Yeah, just get your new plan in, okay? All right, now, that's that. Let's see if there's any business. Okay, I have some July twenty-eighth minutes. Let's start with you listening.
I would like to ask, what would be done with six degree walnut, the nacho?
Oh, the, I'll make a decision on it after we do the minutes.
All right, do we have to vote to accept these minutes?
You making the motion?
I will.
Second.
I will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of, which one of these? July twenty-eighth. You were not here.
I was not.
I was not here.
I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July twenty-eighth.
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? No opposition, approved. While Mr. Hanks is writing that, I want a motion to the July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-five minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting minutes?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, approved. We have another seven minutes. July twenty-eighth.
We just did July twenty-eighth.
I thought you did too.
Was that down over there?
I just took it out of here.
Where's the other one?
The one.
Which one you have?
What's the date?
It's the twenty-eighth.
We have duplicates.
What's the date on this one?
July twenty-eighth.
Oh, we just did it over there. How about July fifteenth?
July twenty-eighth. I don't have, don't have a place to sign.
No place to sign them now?
Um, well, Robert Rice can sign, and you weren't here.
On July twenty-eighth?
Yeah, and you weren't here.
I don't think so.
This has, uh.
So we'd have to, uh.
This one has no signature page.
That one does not?
No.
Neither does that one.
No, I signed that one.
No, I did, but my name wasn't on it.
Oh.
Mr. Rice is on it, and he wasn't here.
All right, so I'll put yours on.
I give it back.
Yeah, nine, July fifteen.
I wrote July fifteenth. Already for July fifteen. My name's already signed, so I wrote down July fifteen, but July, July twenty-nine, twenty-eight.
Okay. Are you correcting the signature page now for?
I don't have, she's got it.
No, I'll have yours added as well.
Do what?
I'll have yours added as well.
No, just give it, give me that, um, wait.
Your name.
I don't have paper, somebody's.
Seven, ten.
June seventeenth.
It's already been signed, wait for Lori to read it aside. Do, now listen here.
I was here.
Do, do you know if, if, uh, Mariella, do you know if we vote to approve the June seventeenth prior?
The June, it would have it written in front of a little sticky, you know, it would say vote if it wasn't voted on.
No, it says it's been voted.
It's checked.
Okay.
Just wait on your signature. Right? That was completed.
Okay.
Yo, who's that?
Oh, Robert Rice.
He's missing.
Mariella, I'm gonna just ask you again. Uh, Mr. Trevor Brown, Brown and Cameron, Cam, Camden Brown. Are those the new individuals?
They were the potential buyers, but the contract did not go through. They did mention that they would like the withdrawal without prejudice, but when I requested a letter, um, for their withdrawal without prejudice, uh, they said they would be showing up to none, and unfortunately, they were not able to show.
Okay. Did they agree to do the withdrawal without prejudice or not?
They mentioned that they were going to discuss it.
Oh. So what I'd like to do is, they're not here, we haven't heard from, they were still in discussions what they're gonna do.
Continue it?
I would, huh?
Would you like to continue it?
Would you like to continue this?
I would, I'm sure.
Yep.
Okay, make a motion.
I would make a motion to continue the sixty-three walnut case.
I'll give you the case number. Case two oh two five, oh seven, oh two, special permit.
To the next meeting in September.
Which would be what, September?
Sixteenth.
So continue just to September sixteen.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All those, no opposition? Okay, Mariella, we can inform that, but we continued it to September sixteenth, okay?
Thank you.
Any more business before the board?
No, do you all have anything for us?
Yes.
Good evening.
You wonder why we're here?
I know.
Well, I just thought maybe you.
I thought you were droning.
I thought maybe it was date night out, and you're like, what can we do, let's go to the Gardeners zoning board.
I want to clear this out.
I was, I'm a cheap date, what can I say? Um, Chairman LaFond, I'd like to put me just.
Would you, yeah, come up to my phone, please? Good evening.
Good evening.
Probably put the copy to the horse here.
Yeah, but I, I, yeah. Um, Chairman LaFond, good evening, good evening, members of the zoning board. Um, some of you may know me, may remember me, Colleen LaPeria, I worked here long ago at, at City Hall for Mayor Kelly and Mayor St. Helier. So I was down in the corner office, um, got to know some of you very well back then. Um, but what brings me before the board this evening is a matter that, um, has occurred over the course of the last week. Um, I reside here in the city, I've lived here for about forty-five years now, I can't believe it's been that long. Um, I live over in, um, the South Gardner area, I live on Sunset Road, ninety-six Sunset Road. And, um, I have a neighbor at ninety Sunset Road, um, his name is Harold LeBaff, um, some of you may know him as well. He, uh, has Shane's Hot Dog Stand down on Union Square, and he works a lot of the events, um, throughout the community and throughout neighboring communities, um, providing, uh, food and services to, uh, folks that attend these functions. Um, long story short, um, we're a very tight-knit neighborhood, as some of you may know. And over the course of, uh, this, not this past weekend, but the weekend prior, Mr. LeBaff actually, uh, had Davenport paving come and, uh, create a second driveway, directly adjacent to my driveway. Unfortunately, um, Mr. LeBaff has habitually abused our good graces as neighbors for many years. Um, he has parked both recreational, um, at one point a boat bigger than my house, um, and commercial vehicles all over his lawn. Front lawn, side lawns, back lawn. Um, I've been a good neighbor, I haven't complained, but, um, what has transpired now, um, has just created a, a really, it, I mean, I, I'm, I'm so seriously aggrieved. It's, it's actually affecting my health, I can't believe I let it do that, but, um, you know, after all this time and so many infractions on his part, I just, I, I needed to bring it to someone's attention. Um, Counselor Dernalowitz, our Ward five counselor, was made aware, I did also make, um, the city engineer aware of what has transpired. And I probably should have gone before the building department, but, um, there are some issues, as you've already mentioned this evening. And, um, I just, to be honest, I don't have confidence in, uh, the building department doing the right thing, at least by us. And I say that because, um, about a year ago, when I had just, I thought I had enough at that point, um, I asked my husband to reach out to the building department and question if this is allowed, you know, why this individual can park a commercial vehicle on a street, um, for, you know, hours and days without, you know, I mean, I thought somebody with commercial vehicles and a DOT tag. Um, there are rules and restrictions, um, for that kind of thing, and, um, my husband made a call to the building department, and I'm not sure who he spoke with at the time, but the gentleman basically told him to tread lightly where Mr. LeBaff is concerned. And he looked at a map and said, well, from what I can see according to the map, your vehicle is parked on his property, which is not the case. Our driveway, you know, has been the same driveway, we've not been able to, um, change our driveway in any way, um, for the past, you know, umpteen decades because of the situation, you know, our home, we have a small ranch-style home that was built in the nineteen fifties, one of Mr. Lichian's developments back when, and, um, our home is on a radiant, we have radiant heat, our home is built on a slab, we have no foundation because of the high water table in our area. Um, and so, you know, the, the vibrations, the extreme vibrations that, um, will result from any work like that being done, um, could definitely be detrimental to our heating system. And I can tell you that when they had this heavy equipment next door, you know, making this additional driveway, it, it shook my entire house, I mean, it shook things off my walls, cracked my ceiling. Um, I don't even know if there's been any damage to my heating system, and I won't know the full extent of that, um, if there is any until the wintertime. Um, I have outlined everything in a letter, um, that I addressed to you, Mr. LaFond, as chair of this body. And, um, I just, I, I'm, I'm very concerned that, you know, given the circumstances, um, I don't know what's going to happen. I don't know, um, you know, he's done pretty much what he wanted to do with his property all of these years, and he basically told us, when I asked him if he had a permit, he basically told us that he could do whatever he wanted on his property. Um, not to mention the fact that he is in violation, not only did he not obtain a permit to either resurface his existing driveway, but he definitely didn't obtain a permit to put in a new driveway. Um, he doesn't have the two hundred feet of required, um, frontage from midpoint to midpoint.
He doesn't want to ask you that?
Yes, sir, and the hard surfaces that he has already created too, one in the back where he has his trailer parked now, big travel trailer, and one directly next to my driveway, um, don't have the five-foot, um, you know, setback requirement. Um, and, and, and last, I really need to mention that, um, I have serious concerns because, again, we have had some severe flooding in that neck of the woods. Um, there is a catch basin that drains directly into, I mean, if he's allowed to build that secondary driveway, there's a catch basin right there. And, um, you're gonna have, you know, even if you left it a gravel surface, you're gonna have rocks and silt and petroleum byproducts running into, um, the city's water drainage system, and I, I think that's going to cause additional problems for people in that area. Not to mention the runoff that's gonna go in front of my driveway and my property. Um, and lastly, the environmental impact, um, you know, I mean, this gentleman comes and he cleans his vehicles, you know, he used to empty his boat's village tanks into the stormwater system, uh, you know, I, I just, I needed to bring this before this body so that somebody could take a look at these infractions and hopefully, um, you know, stop this from, from continuing. I mean, I, every time I hear heavy, you know, equipment, I'm afraid it's a, it's a pavement truck, you know, coming to lay asphalt directly next to my home. Um, and I just, you know, that, it's, it's already, it looks horrible, and it's already detract, you know, it's, it's going to, maybe it'll increase the value of his property, but it's decreasing the value of mine. I can't enjoy my side yard, I can't enjoy, can't leave my windows open, um, just the dust at this point, but eventually it'll be, you know, the, the fumes from the, the asphalt or whatever they happen to, you know, put down. Um, it's, it's really a hardship, um, for us, and I, you know, I'm, I'm hoping that someone, um, you know, in, in, you know, in their wisdom can, um, look into this and hopefully, um, help to remediate this matter.
Well, you definitely have some issues there.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, we do.
I know Dick Harris, he's an assistant building commissioner, uh, so he's probably fully aware of a lot, a lot of things you've spoken about. I mean, you said he does not have any permits. Unfortunately, the board, from what you explained, has no authority to act on these things.
Right, right.
Unless there's a violation, to me, and you, you'll please answer if I'm off. The violation would have to come from the building commissioner or claiming that you put your driveway in without any permits, it's too close to the property line, uh, not the two hundred feet requirement between the two, then he would have to issue a decision. Now, your neighbor could come before us.
Of course, yeah.
For a variance or whatever special permit, then you could see it could be approved or denied. You know, it seems like he doesn't really care what it is, he's just planning to do what he does. But at that point, then it becomes legal action, and that brings in attorneys, and not at the expense of the city, at your expense. Will it resolve the issues? I'm not, I can't say it will or it won't. But it's an avenue of legality that you can go, but I, Mr. Hanks, I would suggest she meet with the building commissioner.
Yeah, so.
And have it inspected, and so he can mark out what's wrong.
So as Mr. LaFond alluded to, I'm Miami's building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer, not here.
Oh.
Not here.
What about the city engineer?
So, hang on a second, so, um, this body is not an enforcement on body, we are here to hear, um, appeals and special permits and variances, so, um, again, if, you know, your first avenue should be with the building commissioner's zoning enforcement officer, cite, like, give him a letter, him or her, whoever's there now, explain your concerns. Uh, the city engineer's an excellent place to start because the city engineer would be involved with the driveway.
During, during.
Yeah, and he's a great guy, awesome guy.
Yeah, and he said that.
You know, so he, he, he could notify the building department as well, but it seemed like you have other issues going on as well, so, you know, I, I think, uh, a, a nice letter to the building department. So, you would like to speak on that?
Board of Health and Conservation too.
So, so, so you have a, a good makeup of people here, I'm a building commissioner's owner's enforcement officer, she's, Lori is Board of Health agent and handles conservation issues as well, so.
Not in Gardner.
When, right, we're not in Gardner, we reside here, but we don't enforce anything here, but.
But I'm concerned with the building, huh, because I tried to contact them last year, and they told me to tread lightly.
Well, put it in writing and serve it to them.
At that point, I, just, okay, it's just, moving is the end goal, I can live with that, but once they dug up the, the, the lawn and filled it in with gravel, and I think they want to pay them, uh, what's that, that's permanent. You can live with the vehicles, it won't affect the board or something like that, unless you make permanent swap, then it's permanent.
Yeah.
Well, at your suggestion, I will redirect, um, the letter, uh, the correspondence that I have this evening, I will redirect it.
My, my advice to you would be to write, write a letter, explain the same stuff you just complained to us, your, your concerns and what you feel are violations of our ordinances. Bring it to the building department, have a date stamped it in, they have unlimited time to respond to you, okay?
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Bill Inspector?
If you can.
If you listen to this.
If you can put dates to it too.
Yeah, oh, I have, yeah.
No, and I mean, that's what, that gives a lot of credence to your letter. And I think you have, you know, conservation, building commissioner, uh, city engineer, they all get a letter.
You know, so, you know, back to Lori's point, are there wetlands close to where he's been excavating and?
Well, uh, yeah, I mean, there are wetlands, in fact, in, in, in the neighborhood where we're located, we're sort of on the cul-de-sac, and two lots, when Mr. Lichian's had those, um, homes built for his development, two lots at either end of that area, um, were supposed to remain wetlands, um, because of the high water table, and, in fact, that's why a lot of the homes were built on slabs because putting basements in. Mr. LeJoy, I'm not sure if anyone knows, um, the LeJoy's, um, he was a teacher here in the city for a number of years, his wife is a nurse at the hospital. Um, they actually tried to put a basement in their home, and it flooded, so they had to, you know, fill it back in.
Well, high, high groundwater may not be the same as, uh, wetland, so it could just be high groundwater, but again, if it, um, you know, you, you, you know, a wetland, you should be able to identify that as, you know, it's wet, this wetland species growing in it, you know, you see cattails, that's a good sign, or different wetland plants, you know, if you believe that he's within a hundred feet of a wetland, then conservation, but our jurisdiction on any soils that he disturbed.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
May I?
Yeah, absolutely.
So I, I did hear, um, part of that at the beginning, um, when you mentioned that your house was shaking. I did receive a complaint about a house that was shaking. Once I took in this, uh, the written complaint, I forwarded it over to the inspector. They usually do their rounds and do the investig, appropriate investigation and determine whether, whether it's a civil matter or if it's something that violates a code or zoning ordinance. Unfortunately, at this time, we only have the one. Um, and at this time, we also have a, an interim zoning commissioner. Who is not here.
And he did it to Josie Terry Junior, his father's.
So we do apologize, uh, that we don't have the appropriate staff at the moment, what we are working on.
Actually, someone did come down from the building department, they came down in a building, you know, in a truck, I recognized the vehicle, and they waited, Harry wasn't at home at the time, and they waited for him to come home, and when he came home, they walked around the front of the property, and, I mean, homes are so close. Basically, Harry told him that he wanted this driveway, unpermitted driveway, to drain into the catch basin. He already told whoever it is. He already told whoever it is that came down, that's what he wanted.
Another individual I just mentioned, the mistakes, uh, the building commissioner should refer, but also, also to the city solicitor. And that's, uh, Attorney Vincent Pucetiere Junior.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I think you've got a number of people you need to have your letter.
Okay.
Go out to all of them. And I mean, depends what this, excuse me, what decisions they make.
Okay.
You know, somebody could end up before this board, you know, for a certain violation, but at this point.
You know, and again, you know, I mean, this, this perhaps is putting the cart before the horse, but, um, I also know from experience that if you don't get ahead of some of these things, sometimes it's too late after the fact.
Yeah, so, so, so there's, you have to keep in mind again that someone may be coming before us at some point over this, through an appeal or a special permit, a variance, whatever it gets to be, so, so we really can't be deliberating too much on this. We can't be discussing too much, because someone may be coming before us, and we don't want to be tainted as a one-sided.
Right, of course.
Now, we, so, so our guidance to you would be start with a building official.
Okay.
Uh, they're, 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 they're the enforcers, zoning enforcement officer. All right, so that, that would be where you, where you really want to start. Again, Mr. Oliver, great guy, city engineer, you know, make him aware of the, of the additional driveway, because he would have had to approve that through a driveway permit. So there's, there's your couple avenues to start with.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you, thank you very much, thank you, appreciate time.
Okay, any other business people with the board? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.